All right, 6:30. Julie, would you call the roll, please?
Tara Caston, here. Ken Dawson.
Here.
Christopher Espinoza.
Here.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Here.
Terry Pavisic.
Here.
Don Runner.
Here.
Rayhan Hashim.
Here.
And Jason Triho.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, having a quorum, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Hank, we'll start item number three with student perspectives.
All right, let's see. Hello. I'm too tall. Good evening, everyone, it's nice to see all of you. I am really excited tonight to welcome our Languages and Cultures Club. They're a fairly new club at North High School, but have a lot of students and they just did a couple really cool things, and so I'm really excited for them to share tonight. So I'm going to welcome up our two sponsors, Nicole Gunkel and Malanka Vasilevich. Come on up.
Hi, we're here as the sponsors for this wonderful club, so we just wanted to introduce our students.
We have Zain, Araz, Kathy, Nico, and Faez.
Thank you.
Who was who?
Hope you guys are having a good night. So I'm Zain, I'm one of the leaders of the Languages and Cultures Club. So in 2023, our club started as the EL club. This helped foreign students who did not know much English to learn pretty much like the basics and everyday like terms and phrases. But recently, we switched over to the Languages and Cultures Club. This unified all the different cultures represented at DGN, and we get to learn similarities and differences between them. In order to achieve this, the student leaders create different activities through recommendations of our peers, and then we have them vote on the most favorite activity everyone wished to partake in.
Of course, we like run these like, you know, activities to our sponsors to see if it's possible in schools, such as like just handing out field trip forms or whatever. And then, so what we do is like mainly for us, the key is engagement, safety, and of course, learning about the different cultures. All the different cultures presented in DGN are all, you know, like cool in their own aspect. And then, for example, we visited the National Museum of Mexican Arts on Tuesday, October 22nd. We simply just like walked around the, like, you know, community, looked at all the murals and all that kind of stuff. We went into the museum, just like learned about the culture. That's really all we did.
Great.
All right, my name is Kathy Toledano, and what this club does is essentially create a safe space for people who have trouble with the English language. Not only has this club created a space for us to foster friendships, but it's also created a space for us to create connections, connections which could last us a lifetime. And apart from this, in this club, we get the opportunity to learn from different languages, from different cultures, cultures that could be our own or it could be others. Thus, this club has both an educational and social aspect to it.
All right, so I'm Nico, this is my colleague, Araz, and just touching more on how this club impacts our members' lives. It brings people of different cultures and ethnic groups together, but it also helps everyone, you know, experience like different cultures as well as like being proud in your own. But another thing we like to commend ourselves on is how we, whenever there's a exchange student or someone foreign coming into the school, usually it's harder for them to like adapt to the new environment and everything. So we think that our club could be like a very good, you know, just place for someone to just have a warm and welcoming environment, if you will.
Yeah, going off the languages aspect, I myself speak two languages. I speak English as a second language, and I remember learning English in kindergarten and first grade. I would get teased by my friends and my peers for the way I grammatically said words and my accent, and I think that's really important for the people in our club to not feel ashamed of speaking English the way they do. This is a safe space to learn English, this is a safe space to communicate with others, so no student should feel embarrassed about how they speak, just in general.
And then, another thing that I wanted to just add in there was a little quote that I like to say during our sessions, and that's "we rise by lifting others," and I think it's just a good way to just overall just reflect how our club just wants to be known for.
Yeah, concluding off, I think this club is designed to unify everyone in the, like, every member in the club, and I think it's just a safe space, it's like a family. We're like a big, warm family.
One of the things that you all know is that the number of EL students in both of our schools continues to increase, and I'm really, really proud of these students and of our sponsors who have created a space and kind of evolved with the changing needs of our students to welcome different students. As they've mentioned, it has to be one of the most difficult things to come here as a high school student and not speak English, when all of your teachers and peers and the majority of the people around you don't have that connection. They've created a space where students feel welcome and comfortable to go when they don't know the one main thing that connects all of us is our language, right? And so they've found a space and created a space for those students, and I'm just really proud of them, so thank you guys so much. So if you guys have any questions for our students.
I got a question. Two questions. One is, this year, what are the different languages and cultures that club members are from this year? And then, number two, to the gentleman with the Ferrari shirt. Obviously, I like you because I like Ferraris, too. I hope you get closer than I am to owning one. But what is your primary or your first language if English is your second language?
I speak Bengali.
Wow.
Language of Bangladesh.
Okay, cool.
And can you repeat your first question?
I'm wondering, what are the different cultures and languages which members of the club are bringing this year?
Yeah, we have people from foreign countries such as Ukraine and Russia, they speak both fluently. We have Spanish-speaking students, we have Bengali-speaking students, me and my cousin over there, actually. Zain in the front speaks Urdu, it's the language of Pakistan, so we're a pretty diverse group. And then I also speak Greek as well, so.
Wow, fantastic. Thank you, guys, you're doing a great job.
Can you talk about, so you said it's social, I get that, like, how do you do the educational piece? Is it conversational? Do you bring in like tutors? Like, how do you all accomplish that in your group meetings? Do you speak to that a little bit?
We do team-building activities, so we kind of get the bond and trust with each other first, especially students who don't speak English very well. And then, we're going to plan on presenting our cultures just in the classroom to kind of get a feel of who's who and what cultures everyone has to bring.
If you have a new student that comes into the school and you know that they speak Spanish, do you kind of try to find them and bring them into your, into your club? So that, you know, you can help them, mentor them, I guess, in the school to get around and...
Yeah, if I do see there are students who speak mainly Spanish or one language, I'll kind of go up to them. I have gone up to people and asked them if they wanted to join our club, and they said, "It sounds great," they'll let me know, so we're waiting on a bunch of students.
Good, good.
It's going to expand in the future.
Because I think that makes a student feel more part of the community if they're approached by other students to, to come in and do that, so that I give you guys a lot of credit for taking the initiative to do that.
Yeah.
And I'm sure, you know, with the new students, it's such an overwhelming experience that even if they don't answer you the first time you ask them, go back and follow up a second or third time, and I'm sure they'll be more than happy to join.
Because they're probably nervous, too.
Yeah, without a doubt.
How many students are in your club now?
I'd say over 12, we don't have a rough estimate, but I'd say 12 current participating students.
And what do you guys do socially beyond, I mean, I know you mentioned going to the Museum of Mexican Art, any other activities that you guys do on a routine basis?
We do arts and crafts, we do that after school. We have plans along the way, so that's still up and coming.
Thank you, thank you for all you're doing and presenting.
Really very good. Thank you.
All right, in November of each year, we have a pretty big community event called the Grove Express, and for a few years now, there's been members of our school community that have served on that group and have helped run that community event, and we've offered them a little time this evening to come on up and share what they're doing and give us an idea of what's happening this month in our community.
Good evening, my name is Lily Bowerman, and I am a member of the Grove Express Junior Board Foundation with the rest of the students.
Hi, I'm Angela.
Hi, I'm Lily.
And I'm Finley Warner.
And we are here to kind of talk about the race in general, our roles and our future plans that we want to carry out in the next month or so.
The Grove Express is a non-for-profit race that raises money to donate directly back to the community of Downers Grove. This means we donate to schools, local organizations, and more. The race takes place on Thanksgiving morning each year and has been bringing the community together for over 20 years.
Well, what do we do? The Junior Board of Directors was a new addition to the Grove Express Foundation two years ago as a way to connect with the youth of Downers Grove. We also give opportunities to high school students to learn about how an organization like this is run to better prepare them for other experiences outside of high school.
Within the Grove Express Foundation, each board member is on a different committee. Similarly, each junior board member is also on a committee or two to work on throughout the season. We all choose a committee that aligns with our interests so we can pour our passions into this project. Each committee has its own separate jobs and responsibilities.
The junior board is also responsible for collaborating with one another to accomplish some of our personal goals and activities. For example, last year, the DGN board members filmed a short skit for the video announcements to inform students about the race. The video was very successful and resulted in many more registered high schoolers. Not to mention, we also help coordinate and direct volunteers at said events. At meetings, we become ready to brainstorm with ideas and look forward to setting up and executing Race Day. We are all eager to help whenever and wherever we're needed.
This year, we have many new plans for what the junior board is going to collaborate on. We have plans of getting students involved with both mascots being there on Race Day and the National Anthem student as a D99 student. Additionally, we have been interviewing board members and race families alike, asking them why they participate in the Grove Express race. We are also continuing the competition started last year between the schools, where North and South will compete against each other. The school that shows the most involvement with the Grove Express during volunteer opportunities and race participation will win a token to hold on throughout the year until the next Thanksgiving break. DGN is the current holder of the trophy, but South is ready to make their comeback.
This is my second year on the Grove Express Junior Board, and I am one of the two seniors, and I've learned countless lessons regarding working with a team, organizing volunteers, putting together a community event in general. We see all the hard work and dedication pay off, not only on Race Day and on Thanksgiving morning, but throughout the entire year through the donations that the Grove Express gives out to help the community and D99.
Our website, groveexpress.com, contains all the details about registering for the race, which, by the way, you can do right now. The current price is $45, and the race begins at 8:30 a.m. on Thanksgiving morning on Main Street. Also, make sure you're looking out for our countless volunteer opportunities to help with the race. Thank you all so much for listening, we are very excited about this upcoming race and all the things that come with it. Stay tuned, and we hope to see you on Race Day.
All right, thank you for sharing about the upcoming event, I'm sure many in the room will be there. All right, our students, you're welcome to stick around for the rest of the meeting, but if you'd like to run away and start your day off tomorrow early, you can do that as well. Thank you for coming this evening.
Bye-bye, thank you.
All right. Who's first this evening?
Oh, go ahead.
All right.
I hope everyone had a fun Halloween, there were some fantastic costumes this year at school, so that's cool. Football is doing great with two consecutive wins against Hesel South and Central, as well as the girls volleyball team who won their regional last week. Many of our fall sports are in playoff season, girls and boys of our fall sports are in, have won their sectional and will be competing at State this weekend in Peoria. The girls volleyball team will be competing at the semifinal sectional this weekend at Willowbrook High School on Tuesday against OPRF, and our football team will be competing in the second round of playoffs on Saturday at home, 1 p.m. against Fenwick. So go Trojans. Homecoming was a great success with all the festivities going on according to plan, and people had good feelings about the dance overall. At the Student Advisory Board meeting last week, we discussed what we could do to make homecoming better for everyone, some criticism of the DJ was brought up, and ways to make spirit days more accessible for kids. We also talked about ways to make the dance itself cheaper for more students to afford, so that was a big topic that the students had a lot to say about. Later in the same meeting, we discussed the issue of students not cleaning up after themselves in the lunchroom, and we came up with some solutions regarding the accessibility of cleaning supplies, and then also encouraged custodians to build better relationships with the students themselves. So overall, during the meeting, the students and part of the board gave some very good feedback on the topics that we discussed. Coming up, we have the Fall Play Performance on the 21st through 23rd, and we go straight into Thanksgiving break, so that's how November is looking.
All right, so for both schools alike, we're kind of in that homestretch, which is kind of crazy to say that we only have about six weeks left of school. But yeah, over the past weekend, we've had our Halloween Fun Fair, which, as always, has been a success. I was Batman like the last eight years in a row. It was really awesome to see all the teachers' families come out and everyone from the neighborhood. It was, it's never failed to make us all have fun and laugh. Secondly, in football alike, we are also going into the second round of playoffs, it's going to be a tough matchup at LT. If you want to go support the Mustangs, go be there. And also, our girls volleyball team just won the regional, too. We actually have a chance to play each other later on, hopefully we can be able to do that. Alike, also, the principal student advisory council just met, and we've actually gotten a donation of some Dunkin' gift cards we've been able to give out to reward students on their positive behavior for throwing away their trash, and we've seen that positive income roll back, and I think we're overall heading in a positive direction.
Thank you, Jason.
Very good.
All right, any questions for our board members? All right, thank you both for your reports. We have a couple of items this evening for the board, starting with the school report card from Gina. It was released last week, and as we've done in years past, Gina will present over several board meetings with updates on different aspects of it, so I will turn it over to her.
Thank you.
You can click.
So, tonight, we are going to look, talk a little bit about the summative designation, specifically the House that I showed last year, we'll look at this year's and compare a little bit between years in terms of that, and then we'll look at graduation rates. At our next meeting, we'll look just kind of the trailer, SAT scores and ninth grade on track, so those will be the areas that we look at tonight and next time. And the reason why we're looking at graduation rates tonight is because it is the bulk of our score. So, summative designation is commendable. We pretty much have been commendable every year that there has been a summative designation. What it means essentially is there's no underperforming subgroups, schools that must have a graduation rate of 67% or higher, and not in the top 10% of schools. And as I said, we pretty much have been commendable every year. There was some carrying over of designations in 2020 and then not assigned in 2021. So, the House. So you may recall from last year was the first year that the state put out this schoolhouse visual, and one of the things that I really like about it is it shows not just what our overall index score is, which is important, but what I like about it is it kind of shows you in each of the main areas that were evaluated on, the areas that they look at. And as I said, graduation rate is half, so it's half of our score. So for example, this is North's visual, you can see for graduation rate, they got full amount of points, so it's worth 50%, and they got all of their points for that. To give you an example, this year, you can see up at the top where the index score is 89.71, last year was 87.23, so up a little bit, 2.48, and up in some areas as well. So for example, up a little bit for chronic absenteeism, .78, so not quite 1%, but still up, which is good, as well as up in the climate survey. Really, all the areas are either staying the same or going up, except for ninth grade on track, which did go down .08, so very small percent going down. So pretty much holding or increasing in all of the areas. And you can see kind of that indicator weight description at the bottom kind of shows you how each one measures out. Give you an example of what that index score means, this is where North High fell compared to all of the other schools, right? So to be exempt, which is the highest 10%, and yes, I realize it's not 90%, but that's because some of the index scores are tied, we had to be over 91, at, I should say, 91.26. We're just slightly under that at 89.71. South Schoolhouse, this year is 80, the index score is 86.44, last year was 84.09, so up 2.35 in terms of the index score, which is good, and also up in several areas. So up 1.7% in chronic absenteeism, which is really good, obviously. Up on climate surveys, down a little bit in terms of ELA and math proficiency, and up a little bit in terms of ninth grade on track, also very slightly on EL progress to proficiency. But overall, when you factor in all of those areas, up just over 2%, 2.35. So, same idea, but just showing where South High falls in terms of that index score. So definitely at the higher end of commendable. So as I said, 50% of the score is made up on graduation rate, and they look at three graduation rates, the four-year graduation rate, the five-year graduation rate, and the six-year graduation rate. Basically, 60% of the score is the four-year graduation rate, 30% of the score is the five-year graduation rate, and 10% of the score is the six-year graduation rate. So I just was going to show you a little bit about how we did for each one of those graduation rates. So, as you can see, there was a slight increase. So in 2023, our four-year district graduation rate was 92.8, and 2024, 93.4. So slight increase, as well as an increase when you look at the five-year average. That's the four-year, so that's 60% of the rating.
Gina, why are there five years depicted on the four-year graduation rate? Five-year average across...
It's just a five-year average, so how our graduation rate was with class of 2020, 21, 22, 23, and 24.
The average across those five years of the four-year rate? I'm sorry, I'm still not following there.
So we look at, so each one of the screen, each one of the slides, excuse me, looks at basically several different years to get that average. So five years, so we look at the class of 2020, class of 2021, class of 2022, 23, and 24, and then we come up with an average based on that. So we're still talking about the four-year graduation rate, and in just a minute, we're going to talk about the five-year graduation rate and then the six-year graduation rate.
So these are students that graduated in four years. Okay, okay, not over four years, those who graduated in four years.
They graduated in four years.
Okay. I know, it's weird how it is presented. Now I understand, I'm sorry. By the state, not by us. So five-year graduation are students who graduated in five years, from when they started as a freshman?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. They didn't graduate in four, but they graduated in five. Okay.
But not on this graph.
Not on this graph, no. This is just four years.
This is the five-year average of the four-year graduation rate.
This is just the four years, right. And there could be a lot of reasons why a student would graduate, by the way, in five years, or even six years, so there's lots of different reasons.
Especially our large classes at the Transition Center.
Where do the students that graduate in three and a half years? They fall within the four-year rate. But we should get more points for that. And we get a lot of points for it. So the graduation rate is 50% of our designation, and 60% is based on the four years, so 60% of that is based, so we do, we do very well. I'm just, I'm just saying that because they took less time, we should get... They get a three-year graduation, three and a half. A higher percentage because of that, so. So the next one, well, let's see, you never know. I remember when they just did four and five years, so it's possible, you never know. So this is the five-year graduation rate, so these are students who graduated in five years. There could be a multitude of reasons for that. It could be that they are special education students in some cases, it could be that they are EL students in some cases, so they may come to us without enough credits to graduate in four years or within whatever the remainder of those four years would be. It could be a student for a variety of different reasons fell behind, could be anything from, you know, being hospitalized or all kinds of situations that could cause that. So this is our five-year rate, you can see that we're slightly down, so in 2023, our rate, I should say, slightly up, 94.3, then we're at 93.4, so we are .9 down, but we seem to be holding our own each of those years. The one thing that's different in this rate, if we have, and we do, have special education students who leave as well as in the sixth year, is that they change the way that they look at these rates, so as to include students who, exclude, excuse me, students who go to our T99. So, our five-year rate is down a little bit, but we're pretty close to the average for the five years, and our six-year rate, as you can see, is up a little bit. So in 2023, it was 92.8%, and now we're at 94.4%. And I believe part of that is probably because of the way it's being calculated now versus the way it was calculated in the past. However, we have other years that we were close, I mean, if you look at 2021, we were at 95.2%, even with the old calculation. So, so to say that it's approximate, we can't, but certainly the calculation, it is being calculated a little bit differently than it was in the past. So, are T99 students there until they're potentially 22? 22 years old. So you could go through the four years and then go there? So do they get lumped into...
They don't any longer. In the previous years, they are in our numbers, but this year is the first year that they aren't included in our numbers.
So they get taken out after four years, or... They basically meet the graduation requirements within the four. Okay.
If you remember, those students used to technically count against us, and we worked with Lend to get a law in place to make it so that they no longer counted against us.
So no one from T99 is counted? They are if they did, they're not required to go to, T99 students aren't required to, and they're not required to stay until their 22nd. Okay. So they could be calculated if they opted not to go in. Okay.
In the schoolhouse visual, chronic absenteeism being 10% of that weight distribution, is that an area that seems to be holding us up from breaking that 90, what was it, 91? 91.26%?
Yeah, it's an area where we definitely made growth from last year to this year. I think at North High, I think at both schools, we're better than state average at this point, if I remember correctly. So we've, we're not quite in line with the numbers we were pre-pandemic, we still have some area where we could, you know, if that's what normal is, it's hard to say if that's normal past pandemic. to say if that's normal past pandemic, but we've definitely lowered the rate of chronic absenteeism by a great deal on both sides of town. So if we continue to go in that trend, we could pick up a few more points. But if we're going in that trend, it's likely that the state is going in that trend as well, so, you know, everybody could be making up.
So be hard to catch up.
Ground in that way. Yeah, it's just, it's hard to say, right? So.
And do you not know, like, are there any schools in Illinois that are approaching that ten percent?
Ten percent?
You're not good to say any of that.
I don't know off the top, but you'd have to go like school by school and look, there's no graph that just shows you.
Is that in part affected by the addition of the mental health days that are counted towards chronic absenteeism?
Yes, ones count against us.
Yeah. I mean, that's why it's going to, pre-pandemic numbers would be nearly impossible to get to. Sorry, I might have been saying that. I cut you.
Sorry.
And there's no forecast from the state to suggest that they're going to set those as not part of the?
We've tried legislative means to get there, but there's no indication that they'll make that move. And if they make that move, it'll be for everybody, right? You know, the way that it's set up is the top ten percent get in there, and that, that number changes. You know, it's unfortunately, unfortunate that they've drawn that line at ten percent, and then the next eighty percent are lumped into that next group, right? But that is, I mean, that's the scoring system that we work under at this point.
The one good thing over time with the mental health days is we record them now as mental health days, so they are uploaded to the state as mental health days, so the state can actually look at students in Illinois, how many students are actually using those days. Now, that of course means that that's if what parents, you know, tell us or share with us. The other thing is chronic absenteeism is also part of federal law, so changing that definition for school accountability, we have to be in accordance with. So it's a little more complicated.
So last year, we identified chronic absenteeism as area where we could definitely use improvement, which we have, which is great. For the next year, are there any areas where you really think we could make up that ground to get to the next level?
See, one of the areas that we've already discussed with the board is the climate survey, and the fact that we've used that five essential survey, which really isn't tailored for a school like ours, and we've looked at trying to bring in a different tool. We're still working with the Illinois State Board of Education to get that change made. But I think in adopting a tool that is more applicable to our setting and that students and staff, because that's who we're rated on, would see a set of questions that they might be more interested in answering because they pertain to our school environment, I'm hoping that that would drive that number up, and we'd be able to capture a few more points in that area. Other than that, I mean, we, we've put a lot of effort into ninth grade on track, we're putting a lot of effort into grades and catching Ds and Fs, that might be another spot where there's potential for some growth. The metrics around EL path to proficiency make it very difficult, especially in a community like ours, to, at the high school level, to get a lot of growth in there. Tests are, as you know, a year-to-year basis, based on that class, you know, come back next time and talk a little bit about it, but the whole test is going to change next year from SAT to ACT. So we have no predictive analytics to tell us what to expect in that next year. And then the year after that, ACT will change their entire testing format, so it will be hard to even judge from next year to the following year, how that will work. And we're still waiting for the state to tell us what the cut scores are and how we'll be rated on that. So it's, it's impossible for us to project. And that will include the science proficiency portion of the test. How am I doing?
I'm impressed.
Thank you. So when we look at science proficiency, ELA proficiency, and math proficiency, it's nearly impossible to predict what that will do in our scores next time next year. So, long story longer, I would say that the areas of focus continue to be chronic absenteeism, continue to be ninth grade on track, continue to be our climate survey. Those would be our three areas where there is potential to pick up a few points here and move up on that graph where you saw where we fall. At the same time, every school district is chasing the same thing, and we're all compared to all the other school districts. So it's, it's not like, I would love for it to be set around growth or attainment based on where you are as a district, that's just not the rules of the game. We're all compared to each other, and every school district in Illinois is trying to make growth in this area. So it's just hard to say, will we move into an exemplary category? You can see we're right on the cusp, you know, but for us to move into there, somebody would have to drop out of there, right? So it's, it's not a, it's a moving target to shoot for.
So the climate survey, is that score based on response, the number of responses you get in addition?
Response rate.
Not, not actually the responses?
No, it's response rate.
Did you say you're still waiting on approval from the state to switch?
Yes. I'm supposed to hear this month.
I think a survey that people would be more engaged in would be an easy sell?
There's a state process.
Yeah.
Then when does that new survey tentatively go out?
In the spring.
Okay.
Yeah. We're, if we're still on five essentials or we're on the new one, either way, it'll be in the spring.
Okay.
Are you optimistic we'll get to switch? How the process is going?
It's been approv, well, the process hasn't started yet.
Oh.
We have selected one that's been approved in the past, so I believe there's a high likelihood that it will, but it's not under our control. So I've engaged with the state to the level I can to just understand the processes undergoing and that they know we're interested in moving, but I haven't received the details yet on how to make that happen.
Even if we use the same one, is there any way, anything proactively we can do to increase that response rate?
It's really difficult, since we have no data as to, we don't get any data on who's completed it or when. So we create time during the school day for it, we do it during the access period, we remind people, we send out multiple, multiple reminders. However, without knowing who to, like, tap on the shoulder and say, hey, you haven't gotten to this yet, it's really hard to, you know, we do a lot, the principals, our system, our associate principals, myself, we do a lot of reminding to try to get people there, but unfortunately, we're still missing a few. So we increased our, our rate from the year before to this one, we just haven't crossed that threshold yet to get all our points.
Cool.
So hopefully, a survey that's more meaningful will draw people in.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for Gina? I took a bunch of her questions. For Gina or me?
Yeah.
All right.
You know, before we move on, I have a question for the two principals. From your perspective, how well do you feel these scorecards reflect the great work that I know we are doing at both schools?
Let's restart again. I think they're pretty accurate. I think, I mean, we're so close, both of us are being in that top ten percent category, and I think you can describe it pretty well. As we try to move our target, other districts are too.
Yeah.
The max majority of districts, if not all, are striving for excellence in every area. And so the fact that the target always moves is what makes it challenging. I know that both of us are really proud of the growth that we made, we both went up overall, both of us have been digging into the areas where we dipped a little bit, maybe in with our associate principals and our market shares about how to continue that growth going. So overall, I feel really great about it. I wish we were exemplary, of course. I do know that we have phenomenal teachers and amazing dedicated students, and we'd put them up against anyone to hit that exemplary mark, but I'm proud of the growth.
I also think, as always, and I think this is something everybody knows, but it doesn't, the school report card doesn't always show the wonderful things that you're doing.
Right, correct.
But I think that you allow us the opportunity to show you the wonderful things that are going on in, in ways that aren't reflected in that school report card, and just by letting students come to a meeting and show the really amazing things that they're doing, and the way that we recognize students for all of their accomplishments, both academically, athletically, in their clubs, and the things that they do in the community, is really, really important. And so I think that is just, the school report card is obviously a big part, but it's not the whole part. We have a lot of other things that really highlight the amazing things that our students get to do in this district.
I understand, I'm wondering if we will talk a lot of lies, like the school report card is a data point that shows the overall success of how we're doing, and it's a very important data point and a very public data point, but we do view it as one of the data points and try to look at all of the other amazing things that are going on too.
Okay, great.
Build on that, that even the board recognizes that, right? We have our own internal set of indicators and measures that correlate with our own strategic plan, and I would say, like, if you went to community members and said, what's more important, one of these, or the breadth of our curriculum, or the activities and athletics we offer, or, 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 I think that some of these measures might fall lower in the priority list, right? And it's both, right? Yes, this is important, and these other measures and these other priorities that we've set as a district are important as well. So I think together, they give a good picture of our district. I'm proud of our numbers and what's there, and I'm proud of the work that we do to continue to improve those.
Well, I think that just seeing the success of our students is, is a big measure of, of how we're doing. And, you know, if our students are getting into the schools that they want to get into, into the trades that they want to get into, you know, just showing the success that they have after graduation is a huge measure of how well our district is doing. And I just want to say thanks to the students for putting in the time and the effort, because that's where it really counts.
Yeah, so. All right, thank you. There'll be more to come in future reports from Gina, if I let her present. They'll talk over the top. All right, this, I was hoping to have a first reading of updates to the policies related to discrimination, harassment, and complaints. This has turned into a pretty large project, and we continue to work on it. I'm hoping to bring those updates to you at the next board meeting. So still more to come on that, but we continue to work. Tenure safety survey findings, Trev's going to provide an overview, just so you know, this is kind of like a first reading of this, and kind of he'll explain the process. We'll be back in November, at the next meeting in November with more details, and if there's something you'd like for him to dig deeper in on, you could let us know tonight or in the coming weeks, and we'll come back with additional information. So with that, good Travis.
I mean, the last thing between us and ending the meeting, so I will, I will get going on this. So ten-year safety surveys required by every school district to complete every ten years, right? So we completed that this summer, and then we had follow-up meetings with White to go over the different categories and the work that needs to be done, and we prioritized, and that's what I'm going to be talking about tonight, so you can go to the next one. So this is the work that is to be done, and a lot of this is, as the board approves the approval, the application form, then White will go into, we give them access in Iowa's, they'll submit all of the documentation, it'll get to the ROE, they'll review it, and they'll say yes, or yes, but, you need to remove these things. So even in our application, that is not a definitive what I'm going to talk about tonight, that this is what our plan is and/or this is the dollar amount that's going to be attached to it, right? So just knowing that, that's an important part. And then as we go through, once we get that approved, then we come up with a plan of how we're going to tackle the work that needs to be done in the next ten years, is, is the total time that you have for all of the work to be done, and then we have to report annually. So the different categories of work, they really define the urgency of the work that needs to be done, right? So category A needs to be done in the first two years. That is something that has been identified, looking at school code, that is problematic. We need to address that right away. Category B also is in school code, that there is something wrong there, but we have five years to complete that work. And then category C is recommended work. It's not something that we have to do, but it is something that is included in the plan, and it's something, again, that we talked with White about, hey, we would like for these things, these items to be included in that work. If we can tackle them, and we have the financial resources to do so, we want to, we want to make sure and do that. So here are the estimated costs by category, so we have them broken down by school as well. So you can see the overall, the total is just under five point four million dollars for all of the different categories. Remember, category A is that urgent one to two years, so that's about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. When we look at category B, which is up to five years, within the first five years, that's our largest chunk, right? That's that three point six million. So when you look at those two, A and B, we're adjusted about five, I'm sorry, four million dollars in looking at those, those things. And then C again, is that as, as needed, and I'm going to break those down into each category and looking at the, at each school. So we can go to the next one. So you can see with category A, again, this is the, needs to happen in, in one to two years, you'll see that the sharing between the two schools is that door hardware is preventing egress. And so that is shared amongst both of them, in addition at, at DGS, or they're not latching properly. So we have some old doors, we have some old things that just are not functioning anymore, and those, those should be working properly, right? At North, we have some deteriorating concrete at the boiler room from water infiltration, that's something that's been going on, and we've tried to address, but it, it really needs to be addressed in this, in this project timeframe. And then we have fire dampers in, in the rated stairwells. When we look at South, the only additional thing is we have some door frames that are deteriorating. So you can see that the number of, of topics doesn't necessarily equate to the dollar amount. You can see that there's, South has about six times the amount as North, so it's all broken down into the, the different details. So that's it for category A, that gives us that one to two years of what we need to do. When we look at category B, there's more shared things, actually, all of these, these first three items are shared between both schools. So we have doors and door hardware replacement, that's in addition to the other things that were identified. We have mechanical equipment that no longer, this is all HVAC work, refrigerant is being phased out, so they're stopping making that, we need to replace those units. As well as we have some, this is minor, but custodial closets, when I say minor, minor in numbers, but we have custodial closets that, that need to have some additional backflow preventers put in place. If you can go to the next slide, we have a couple more things at North. This is a large dollar item, the structural steel deterioration at the pool. This was found out when we were doing the galvanized pipe replacement this summer. When we were doing that and doing some different work, this was realized. So we know that this needs to be addressed, this is something that we're already having conversations about, what is that, what does that look like? And then we have glazing for wired glass in the doors, that's in the original parts of the school, and then we have some sidewalks and ramps that are causing tripping hazards. One of the things that, that's important to note here, it's not any sidewalk on any of our property, it has to be directly tied to the school building. So when you look at, at different areas, we have some different areas in both of our buildings where there's a tripping hazard, that does not automatically count in this, it has to be tied to the, the school building. So you can see there's quite a bit more of a cost at North than there is at, at South in our category B. Wrapping up in category C, again, this is recommended work. There are four things in, in each of those, and I'm not going to read through each of those, but a lot of this is stuff that we've identified, they've identified as well, right? They were walking around our buildings with clipboards, going through, hey, this, this needs to be addressed, and going through different areas, and those are all areas that, that we want to address in these next ten years. So again, A, one to two years, B, within five years, and C, we have to get it, we don't have to, it's recommended that we get that done within that ten-year timeframe. So our next steps, we're going to be bringing the application for approval to our November eighteenth board meeting, so there will be something done for you to sign at the, at the next meeting if the board approves it. And then, as I explained, White and Company will submit that, and then we'll go through the process, and you'll be informed. the process and you'll be informed throughout the whole thing is, all of the same things as far as bids, all of that is applicable to all of these different, different projects. Questions on any of the different categories or work?
Question, at South, you said, go back to one slide, it said wood bleachers don't have accessible seating. Now the ones at North do?
There is, yes. So that, that is something that specifically at South was, that was noted.
Do you think, even though it's listed as a 10-year priority, it should really be something that we correct in the next year or two?
And that's when, when we get into our planning and when we talk about that, we don't have to wait 10 years, right? We can clump, we can clump some of these and address them in the first year. That would definitely be something that I would wanna get taken care of.
Yeah, I agree.
So what is the board voting on next week? Are we voting on, like?
Our application to send this information in. So it's, it's part of the, the process. This is what, by code, again, when you look at A and B, those, those are pretty much set as far as what White has said.
They did this assessment that we're submitting.
Correct. They did the assessment, they, using school code, going through and identifying all of those pieces. And again, C is something that, that they've identified, and we said, yes, we agree with that, we wanna tackle that also within the next 10 years. So what you're doing is you're approving for us to be able to submit that to the ROE for their review and their approval, and then once we get that component, then we can start planning and saying this is what it's gonna, how, how we're gonna attack it.
Another question, and Wright and Company is the company that did all the renovations, right? Do I remember that?
Yes, they're architects.
The board's architect.
Okay. Got it.
Yep.
No, that's all right.
No, any other questions?
Category A, was that known at the time that we were adopting our budget, and are those costs included in the budget?
Those are not included in the, in the budget, and I would say no. I mean, there were some of the, the door hardware and different things we've been addressing, but it's, it's a lot. The, the quantity is a lot, so, but that is not something that we have addressed fully and/or we don't have that in our, in this fiscal year.
So how are we going to address that then?
Right now, the fire safety fund has about $1.5 million in the fund balance. I don't know what is outstanding from the galvanized piping project.
But fire safety will handle the door latching and stuff like that? Okay.
Yep. And still other projects too.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Like Travis said, this is just the application. This will be something that'll come back multiple times throughout the year.
Thank you, Travis.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Julie, do we have any visitors?
No, sir.
No, we do not.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Chair moves for seconds. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries, we are adjourned.